I'm going to call to order the study session for December 1st, 2025. We have two items on the agenda tonight. We have Wheat Ridge 102 presentations, and we have the interviews for our vacant city council District 3 seat. We will start tonight as we always do our study sessions in our meetings with public comment. You will have three minutes for public comments. The clerk will keep track of the time. When you come up to the podium, there'll be three lights. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. As long as the green light's going, you can speak freely. When it turns yellow, you've got about 30 seconds to start wrapping it up, and when it turns red, please wrap up your comments. We have a couple of people in the House to speak tonight, so I'll call up our first speaker, Renee Schreiner.
Good evening. Hi, Keston. I'm just here representing the Wheat Ridge Chamber, and I wanted to make sure that you guys all knew this Thursday, we are having a celebratory lunch for Mayor Starker. The lunch is 11:30 to 1:00. You can buy your tickets on the WheatRidgeChamber.org website. Please make sure to do that today because we are having it catered, and we do need to turn in a number of people. The other thing is the Wheat Ridge Chamber is going to be having their holiday celebration. It's going to be December 11th, 5:30 to 8:00 in the evening. It's going to be tons of fun because we are going to have a casino night. So for your ticket price, you get your first drink, you get something to eat, you get casino money, tons of fun. So come and join us.
Thank you. Up next, we have Leah Dozeman and on deck, Lowry Burnett.
Good evening, Mayor Stites and members of council. I didn't realize I would be back so soon, but it's great to see all of your faces. For the record, my name is Leah Dozeman. I live and work and play in Wheat Ridge, and I am here this evening to share my strong support for the appointment of Maki Delate to represent District 3. I want to start from a place of deep appreciation for Maki. Over the years, I've had many opportunities to work with Maki across Wheat Ridge through business associations, community initiatives, neighborhood efforts, and countless informal moments where people came together to make the city better. Every single time, Maki has shown up with warmth, steadiness, and an unwavering commitment to community. She is one of those people who quietly does the work that holds a city together. She lifts up local businesses, she welcomes new voices, she creates connections between people who might never otherwise cross paths, and she does all of it with authenticity, humility, and a deep love for our community. In her application, Maki talks about her passion for building relationships, and I can tell you from firsthand experience, that is who she is. Her decades of work supporting small businesses through Edge of Cyber, including the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival and the parade, which has helped me tremendously. Her leadership in the Wheat Ridge Business Association and her involvement in community programs aren't just those resume lines. They're lived commitments that reflect her core values and her dedication to Wheat Ridge. What stands out most to me is the way that Maki truly listens. She listens to understand and takes the time to sit with residents' concerns, think carefully about issues, and approach challenges with a collaborative spirit. That kind of leadership is invaluable and will serve our city well. Her priorities reflect the same conversations many of us have shared around kitchen tables, at our community meetings, and in these council chambers. Protecting the character of our neighborhoods, supporting and retaining local businesses, encouraging thoughtful and responsible growth, strengthening partnerships and building trust, and then bringing people into the process in a meaningful way. These priorities come from real experience and real relationships right here in Wheat Ridge. The most effective leaders aren't those with the best ideas. They're the ones with the heart to carry them forward and the tenacity to see them through. Maki has the heart and grit characteristic of Wheat Ridge. She has the professionalism, integrity, and collaborative ability to lead with humility and respect. District 3 deserves someone who deeply understands this community and has been invested in it and its success for years. Maki is that person. I trust her as a collaborator, a mentor, a neighbor, and a friend, and I trust that she will continue serving Wheat Ridge with the same dedication she has shown time and again. For all of these reasons, I wholeheartedly encourage council to appoint Maki Delate for the vacancy in District 3. Wheat Ridge will be better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lowry Burnett and Eeyore Figless on deck.
Good evening, everyone. Lowry Burnett. I'm a Wheat Ridge resident, small business owner, and I wanted to also come here to speak on behalf of Maki in support of her filling the vacancy within, on the city council. I, when I moved to Wheat Ridge about eight or nine years ago, got to know Maki through the Wheat Ridge Business Association. She's been a very strong leader in her role in that organization, no matter what her role was. She's been a past president. She's currently very active. And one thing that we, anybody that knows her gets to see that she is very involved, very engaged, and very committed to whatever task that she endeavors to complete, and so I think she'd be a great representative of our city. I've seen her over the years as she has raised a large family, that she has been part of a small business, and I think we all recognize the value of small business to benefit the community, whether it be tax dollars providing goods and services or employing local residents and giving them opportunities to succeed. I think that's a tremendous thing. She has always been a great small business advocate and has demonstrated that in numerous, numerous different ways, but very engaged, always attends, as Leah was saying, a great listener, a great collaborator, and is willing to hear all ideas and then come to a solution that I think represents whatever interest it is. So if it's the citizens of Wheat Ridge, I think she'd be a tremendous representative in that capacity. She has won numerous awards and been recognized within the community. The Special Recognition Award in 2021, she was an active participant in helping, I think, be a guide and a steward through that ever, that challenging time, and you know, was really involved, never took a step back from, from those roles and responsibilities. And she was also a grand marshal recently in 2022, which I think demonstrates the, it's a recognition of her engagement in the community, her connectedness to the community, and how people respect her. They come to her for help, for guidance, and for tutelage, and they know that if she can't help you herself, she will find somebody that does, and I think that's a great quality that Maki possesses, and just really helping to build community, to foster. Does that mean that's? Thank you. I support Maki. I hope you will do the same.
Thank you. Eeyore Figless.
Good evening, fellow citizens. You know, one thing that distinguishes all of us who are here today is we care about our city and our neighbors, and we try to help each other out. I came here to say that I strongly urge you to appoint Justin Slocum to fill District 3 city council seat vacated by Corey Stites only after he won the uncontested election for mayor. Justin Slocum is the only applicant who has already proven his commitment to public service by doing what no other applicant has done. He ran for the office. Justin Slocum didn't just talk about serving or just fill out an application form. Justin Slocum put his name on the ballot and trusted the voters of Wheat Ridge. As a matter of fact, maybe you should ask the other candidates, the applicants, why they didn't do so, why they didn't stick their neck out to run for office. Justin Slocum earned the support of more than 1,300 residents, 1,300 residents, over 40% of District 3 voters. That is real, measurable backing from the voters of Wheat Ridge. Not one other applicant here can claim that. Appointing anyone else to the position would ignore the voice of District 3 voters and send the message that stepping up and fully embracing the democratic process doesn't matter. This is not about filling the vacant seat. This is about honoring the will of the voters and rewarding civic courage. Justin Slocum has already demonstrated his desire to serve and showed his faith in our community. Please respect that commitment and the choice of District 3 voters and residents by appointing Justin Slocum to fill the city council seat. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other commoners, and we have nobody online to speak tonight, so we'll move on to item number one, the Wheat Ridge 102 presentations. Mr. Goff, do we have a, well, we do have a presentation.
We do. Our deputy city manager, Mary Ann Schilling, will introduce the item. Thanks.
Great, thank you. We are here tonight for our Wheat Ridge 102 presentation. So Wheat Ridge 102, for those who don't know, it grew out of our Wheat Ridge 101 Civic Academy. It teaches our residents or community members about the city of Wheat Ridge, how it works, and this is the program that is designed to build upon the skills that we're learning in the 101 class and allow people to go through the process of creating a needed change in the community. So what happened here is other programs, our participants were given hand-selected projects from our city staff that were specifically picked out because they were projects that we didn't have the time, capacity, resources to do, to really research these. And it really is something that through the development of this, we've created a framework for what we can do to move forward. So the two projects this year that we are going to be focusing on are youth engagement and then also neighborhood mediation. So how this program started is this fall, the participants each started meeting in September with their project mentors, which include subject matter experts either from city staff or throughout the community, and they were, the goal was to really create a recommendation for the city that we could take, package, and implement immediately through our city. So part of the research that they had to do was create, they had to create some frameworks, they had to do a lot of research, they had to reach out to local businesses, local schools, peer agencies, other community organizations to get some good feedback on what it would take to implement a program like this. And then they're here tonight to present their final recommendations and implementation plan that can be managed by the city or a supporting organization. So here is their, the final project of their, of their project, of their program. And before I hand it off to our youth engagement group to get us started, I do want to recognize the, the time and the energy and volunteer hours that both our community members and then also our mentors put forward this year. We are just very lucky to have such an engaged group that spend their limited free time here with the city, here with us. And so I just want to recognize them for all the time, energy they put in this fall. And then I'd also like to thank Tad Overstreet and Paige Piper from Local Works. They partner with us to make this program happen, and we couldn't do it without them. So without any further ado, I'm now going to hand it over to our youth engagement group to get us started.
All right. Hello, everyone. We are the Wheat Ridge 102 Youth Engagement Project Group here. I am Brianna.
I'm Alex.
And I'm Renee.
And we are going to kick things off with a quick agenda. Hold on one second. Oh, thank you. Oh, cool. Okay. So I see if it works. Oh, yeah. Perfect. Okay. So we are, we've already done intros. I'm going to chat a little bit about the background. We'll discuss the research completed. We will also then go into the proposal, give you a high-level framework. We'll discuss some next steps, and then we will open it up for questions. Okay. So we just gave intros, but one of our group members, Emily Cohen, is not here tonight. She was extremely helpful in, you know, making this all come to life, so we just want to give her a shout out, and also thank you to the mentors and the directors who put on this program. It would not have been possible, obviously, without you all. So thank you so much for your support. Okay, we're going to jump into background, and heads up, there's a lot of text coming, but don't worry, you don't have to read it all. I will do a quick paraphrase. This is just to illustrate the exact program goal that we were given when we showed up to the first program, you know, week during the Wheat Ridge 102. Ultimately, this is just saying that we were tasked with developing a youth engagement blueprint that outlines and identifies strategies to help strengthen youth involvement within Wheat Ridge. Okay, so with that program goal in mind, we also came into the table with guiding principles, making sure that whatever we were moving forward with was increasing the youth representation. We wanted to make sure that we were building an empowering, youth-led organization overall and ensure that any problems or solutions that were coming to the table were identified by youth or that they had the chance to give feedback to, you know, those problems that were being brought to them. And we wanted to give the young residents a real-world civic learning experience. So throughout today, when it comes to what we can get involved with, with Wheat Ridge, there are opportunities, more so for adults. So Wheat Ridge 101, Wheat Ridge 102, we have the Citizens Police Academy, we have committees, commissions, boards, volunteering, and networking opportunities. But we found that the missing piece here was a youth council. So I will hand it off to Renee to chat through the research that she conducted for this.
So we did some research, and what we first started out doing was we went out to different city organizations like the Thornton Youth Council, the Youth Opportunity Advisory Board, the Broomfield Teen, Teen Council, and the Broomfield Public Health Youth, Youth Projects. It gave us lots of great information of where to get started. We also went to, we had to go local, so we talked to the teen services coordinator at the Jeffco Public Library, who will be an invaluable resource as we start this. Lisa Mahana from the principal of Wheat Ridge High School, who is very jazzed about getting started with some kind of youth engagement program, and Sarah Moss from the Colorado Youth Advisory Council, and she gave us some really great ideas on how to get started. So what we did was we went to the middle schoolers and the high schoolers, and we created a survey. And just to give you a little bit, I took some excerpts of some of the things that were given to us. I think the one that says, "I think youth voices could make a difference in the city because their voices will help bring new perspective," is just amazing that this came from a middle schooler. So these kids, they have something to say, they just don't know how to say it or where they can say it. It helps us so that we might be able to, you know, understand new problems and, and really look at it from the youth perspective. Some of the lessons, some of the lessons that we learned, the takeaways, were, we need to set an age limit. We originally started, we were going to work from elementary school, but we couldn't figure out how to make that happen. So we're talking middle school and high schoolers. Groups have to be a manageable size. We're talking, our group will be approximately 10. Ideally, they're going to hold the sessions during the school hours and on school property because it's going to make it so that we're not competing with after-school activities. We want to look at student-led initiatives because we feel like that's where we can earn the most buy-in. And as I said, the students have a lot to say, we just need to ask. And the mentors that we're talking about working with, they would be available for guidance, but the students are the ones that should be leading the charge.
Now we'll walk through our proposal and framework for the youth council. Our goal was to create something unique, pulling from the best qualities from the youth and teen councils we interviewed. You can find more details in our project blueprint, but today we will highlight the core goals, the key recommendations, and the general structure of the council. Once we committed to recommending the youth council, we wanted to establish goals that we believe the program must fulfill. Looking at the examples from Thornton, Broomfield, Boulder, and the State Youth Council group, we identified shared values that should guide this work. First, meaningful youth representation. We didn't want to simply just make space. We wanted to create a structure that genuinely reflected Wheat Ridge's youth. Second, the program must foster collaboration and engagement so students feel connected to their work and to each other, creating shared accountability. Third, the council must produce tangible, visible impact. Youth voices need to translate into real outcomes to build trust and empowerment that their opinions and their work matter. And fourth, the council should teach civic literacy and real-world skills, but not function as another class, but through the hands-on work that they're going to be doing. Finally, this program should strengthen community identity and pride. We want students to feel connected to Wheat Ridge and see themselves as the future leaders of our city. Next, we want to highlight a few key recommendations that will make this council more unique. To achieve meaningful representation, we focused on including multiple age groups from the start. High school students will serve as the youth council, while middle school students will act as their constituents, providing the issues, perspectives, and needs the council will work to address. This creates real accountability and a pipeline for future council members. In future iterations, we would like to see the inclusion of all 11 schools in the city, plus homeschool students, and setting aside seats for students with diverse backgrounds and perspectives. We also recommend using the school year as the official term. This creates a clear beginning and end, reduces burnout, and avoids competing with summer commitments, and gives new cohorts a fresh start every single year. And importantly, the work must produce real impact. When both high school and middle school students can see their ideas implemented, the programs become empowering and meaningful. So now we'll talk a little bit about the structure that we identified. The structure of the council will follow the school year. The fall semester focuses on learning and foundation. Research showed that councils work best when youth lead the process. So early meetings should establish youth-led rules of engagement and team cohesion. Civic literacy is important, but we recommend requiring it for new members only, allowing returning members to dive directly into the work. Fall projects should be small, structured stepping stones, such as helping select the movies or bands for the summer park events, organizing food drives, or planning neighborhood cleanups. These projects will let the students practice the skills they'll need for their capstone work. The spring semester is about leadership and action. This is when the council takes on its capstone project, guided by input from their middle school constituents. Students will divide into subcommittees such as outreach, event design, or marketing to ensure everyone contributes. The semester will culminate in a presentation to city staff and city council in a study session setting. But we also recommend giving the youth council an opportunity to practice through a mock council meeting with maybe middle schoolers filling in on the dais to keep everyone engaged and reinforce that representational structure. Finally, we recommend building in incentives and recognition to this program. This can include certificates, letters of recommendation, celebration events, and, yes, a gavel. A student at the Broomfield Youth Council insisted we include this. It brings excitement and makes the experience feel official. We also suggest allocating a small budget for snacks and drinks similar to what is provided here on council.
All right. Thank you, Alex. So wrapping this all up, we just wanted to chat about a couple of actionable, we think, next steps that the team could take from here. So like we talked about, in general, we think that the program overall could benefit from piloting initially with Wheat Ridge High School and Everett Middle School. We think then from there, you know, establishing the mentors and volunteers and people who would be helping move this project forward. Third, finalize logistics like meeting cadence and aligning on the framework, making sure that it makes sense for the volunteers who'd be running the program, and ultimately beginning student outreach and recruitment. So with that, we want to thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us, and we will open it up for questions.
Thank you. That was a great presentation, and I agree, the gavel. That's pretty sweet, pretty sweet. Do we have questions from council? Counselor Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, guys. As a graduate of the first Wheat Ridge 102, I know and appreciate all the work that you have put in because it's kind of like you got to do a lot of this stuff on your own, and you got to rely on your mentors and everyone else. I have a couple things that just kind of came to mind, and I don't know who to direct it to. But I noticed that in our packet, we had the survey results, and they were like three and a half from like the fifth grade group and like a page and change from the high schools. Do you know? Go ahead, yeah.
Sorry, it's the other way around. The middle schoolers were the ones that, I was pleasantly surprised, the middle schoolers were the one that we got the most feedback from, and they, they had really great things to say. And the people, the way we got the survey out is I went to the PTA president at Everett and asked them, you know, tell me who, who go, who, how to get this out. And so they took it within the school and did, you know, whatever had to be done within the school. And then over at the high school, then I talked with Senate and Key Club, and their, their teachers put it out to those two organizations.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I just, I just said fifth grade, and there was three pages and then.
Okay.
So might have been a typo, don't know. I just was curious as, you know, it just seemed like there was a lot more of those, so doesn't, doesn't really matter. I just was curious as to if you noticed that, and they had a reason why so many of this group responded and not so many of that one, but doesn't matter. More important question, I guess, is, and I don't know because I've been out of school for, you know, 10 years only. But does this take the place of like, or they, do they still have the student councils in high school anymore or middle schools?
You know, some of the, some of the middle schools do, and Everett does. They, in high school, they have like Senate and Key Club, so those are, NHS, those are more like student council kind of organizations. And so they don't have student council as, as such. So it does not replace any, doesn't replace any of those kinds of things.
Two more, and then I'll be quiet, I promise. I thought I read in through here you were exploring of maybe getting some kind of credit for, for the students. Where are you on that? Because this is really cool, if they could get some kind of credit for civics or something.
Oh, it was one of the ideas that was floated by the high school principal as well as something that we saw done in other youth councils in the region. So it was an idea that we floated by that could be used to be able to incentivize some students to be able to participate. It doesn't necessarily mean that it would be able to be done in the first year, but hopefully through future iterations, we'll be able to build multiple incentives to help keep students engaged.
Perfect. And I also noticed you guys said something about homeschool students. How would they be in? How would they be involved?
So for the Broomfield Teen Council, they do a lot of outreach to be able to include all their schools. And they've been able to reach those students who are homeschooled through the library as a networking service. And those kids are able to come to the meetings and be able to participate in similar fashion. It is important that we are including all students and all, the whole youth community. And we can't forget about the homeschool students who don't necessarily have the physical structures of buildings that they're attending.
And, and one thing to add to that, too. We just felt like that it would be an easy include with the homeschool students because they're used to having to go to different places for their curriculum. And so it would be easy for them to come to the high school, come to the middle school, whatever, so that they would be involved. But starting right now, you know, we just thought getting it started with Wheat Ridge and Everett would make it so that it's a good solid base to get started.
Excellent. This is really cool. I support you on however we move forward with this. You have Pat's support and you made my Sunday great. This, I turned football off because this was a lot more fun to eat.
Counselor Holte?
I'm up. I was so excited to see this project. I had the honor of getting to meet with this team one of the evenings they were working. The last several years, when we've had a delegation of adult council people who've gone to Washington DC for the NLC conference. NLC brings youth councils from across the country. And I will, I will say, and people who've attended with me, like I, you know, I chase down the youth and really enjoy engaging with them and hearing, you know, what they're getting out of not just the experience of being in DC and advocating for their communities, but through, you know, doing this type of service. So it was really just, this is a personal passion project for me in this last March. Now Mayor Stites and Councilmember Oom, and I had a conversation about the importance of seeing something like this come to fruition. So this is really an exciting first step. One question and just sort of one, one sort of contribution thought. I liked when, I'd written a question to ask, well, can people do it more than one, one year? And then I heard that, yes, that that was like baked into the plan. And just, you know, one of the things that, when we did Wheaties Academy, like the people who had done it the year before came back as mentors. And so just recommend, you know, as, as this moves forward, that really building in that leadership pipeline about, you know, it's not just doing it again, but, but, you know, really like leaning into those leadership opportunities of coming back and developing like leadership and mentorship. And then the second thing, so I guess it's kind of a twofold question, but can you help me understand when you say middle schoolers are their constituents? Like, how do you see that interaction between the high school and middle school students? And how does that like relate to the type of projects that might be contemplated through the youth-led development process?
Yeah, this idea is something we're really excited about because this would make our youth council incredibly unique compared to the rest of the region's youth and teen councils. We think that this would be an idea where the youth council, the high school students, would be forced to go and survey and even knock on doors of the middle schoolers to be able to understand what the issues and needs are of the entire youth community. We were really looking for a way to be able to empower the entire community and not just empower eight to 10 high school students. And so for us, we really felt like it was important to be able to not only teach that this civic literacy and empowerment is possible to middle schoolers so that they get excited and maybe participate when they join the high school, but to also give them the end result where they see that their voices matter and is heard. So if we're able to encourage and push the youth council to be able to go to the middle school, get these ideas and issues, it'll lead to the middle schoolers feeling like they have a say. And it also can create these mentor pipelines as well, where the high schoolers will get to know the middle schoolers and hopefully help bring them along the way organically.
Great, well, I, I love that. And I would love to see, you know, more, more youth showing up here in council chambers. I know when the Race and Equity Task Force had some youth participation and those voices were so powerful when they showed, showed up and spoke to the things that were important to them as part of that process. So anyway, just a huge fan of this and really excited to see what next steps look like. And just want to thank you guys and your missing fourth, as well as the mentors for all the work on this. Thank you.
Counselor Martel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys. This was a great presentation. As Rachel mentioned, I was honored to be a part of the Wheaties Academy. And it was a really great experience of being a participant in the first cohort and then coming back as a mentor and advisor, and it evolves each time. And so I really love seeing this approach, especially with youth. One question is on the timing. You talk about in the presentation that it would be meetings like at club hour after lunch or during the free time breaks on late starts. I, just as a thought or recommendation, make sure that the launch of this gives it enough time for it to be successful and not, not the kids not have enough time to really buckle down and do the things that they want to do. But my question is more along the lines of the selection process, the qualifications. Can you talk about that a little bit more? The appointment spots versus the application process and what that might look like?
So we really wanted this to represent how the city functions when picking commissions, committees, and boards. We thought it would be really needed if the teachers got invested as well and gave out recommended invitations to certain students to be able to join in, much like council members get to give recommendations for the committees and commissions and boards. But we want to make sure that the same people don't always get to serve on the youth council as well. So we wanted to have some at-large positions too, where they would fill out the applications. These might be students who might not necessarily excel in class, but this might be a niche that not only they're interested in, but they're excited to participate. And so the application, it can be modeled after the many applications that we've done in our research through the other teen councils. But it can also be something more unique where we're not just looking for people who are excited about civic duty, but people who are just excited to represent their community too. It's pretty open-ended right now. We haven't written out an application, but we would be excited to have both sides of it just to make sure that we have the buy-in from the people who are invited in and also those who are excited to apply as well.
Mrs. Stites? Can you also let us know how you kind of relate to all this?
Thank you, Mayor Stites. So my name is Sarah Stites, and I was actually a mentor for this, this program, the Youth Engagement Group. I was a former teacher in Jeffco for 11 years, and then we own our own martial arts business. So we work with kids all the time. I actually wanted to just have the group explain a little bit more because it was something that I think, I think everybody else should hear. These guys put in a ton of research and talked to a lot of people. But the one thing that I wanted you guys to explain a little bit more, maybe just go into a little bit more detail about was some of the projects that did come out of other youth councils, including ones that might have been closer to like the beginning of youth councils and ones that were a little bit more established youth councils. Because I think that was really exciting to hear, you know, from the groups that actually have that program running and what that, that sounds like.
So yes, I can talk a little bit about when we spoke to the Boulder Youth Council, a lot of what they have focused on.
Yeah, you got to speak into the.
Okay.
Yeah.
A lot of what Boulder did focus on was helping the students get some sort of internships kind of towards during the summer. And so giving them experience to then go ahead and become, you know, more involved in the community when it came to internships. And then overall, they would also put on programs where essentially at one point each month, I think it was, they actually had a Friday off for the students and the, the schools were aligned with that. And they did a full day like development session and also let the kids kind of work on projects. And a lot of times, the, I'm actually blanking on the exact projects that they would have, but the Boulder kind of city council would bring projects to the students and get buy-in for them to help with that. So I think ours would function a little bit differently, where it would be potentially having the students come in or the young residents have conversations or provide feedback on potential, you know, city interests or conversations to kind of get their buy-in there. But ultimately, the ideal situation would be the middle schoolers helping kind of inform what projects the actual council would then put forward for Wheat Ridge in general. So yeah, Boulder was more primarily around like internships and then making sure that they had the skills that they could go and like move into those internships in the summer, as well as giving them some days off to work on certain projects that the city council would bring to them, that the students would then buy in and say like, yes, we'll move forward with that.
I specifically talked to the paid person at Thornton that was in charge of the program. And she said that they had, the program had already been set up for, I think it was eight years. And in the beginning, they just took small projects like, things like collecting food for the people without homes. You know, they did trash pickup along the, you know, along the Green Belt, that kind of thing. And she said what they tried to do is, they tried to pick out two or three projects that were continuous every year, so they didn't have to think about new projects all the time. And then they would take one project that was, the kids decided on what that project would be, and it was always a bigger one. So that's why when Alex was talking about the capstone project, that's where it would fit in, is in the beginning, their projects would be small. Like you said, it might be that they helped set up, determine what the music is that's going to go in the park. Or they might just decide to gather, gather food and clothing for the homeless. And then in that second semester, getting into something that's a lot more intense, a lot more work.
And I had the pleasure to actually go to a Broomfield Teen Council meeting and get to see the kids in action, which was really exciting. Broomfield really focuses on doing a youth, a youth leadership conference every single year, where they do all the planning to be able to put on a conference, not just finding the venue space, finding someone to cater for it. They also tried to find the speakers, keynote speakers, to be able to come and present. And they choose what the theme is. And for them, the theme was advocacy this year. And they're getting speakers like Brittany Pedersen and also speakers from the Broomfield City as well. And they're reaching out to everyone and anyone to be able to make sure that there are real leaders that are being these keynote speakers to be able to talk to the kids. A big one that we got to talk to as well was Sarah Moss at the Colorado Youth Advisory Council. As a state organization, she actually helps out a lot of cities form youth councils. And the thing that she really helped structure was this idea of building that team camaraderie with the council members. It's really important that the adults aren't the ones that are leading the charge and the adults aren't the ones that are trying to build this accountability and build the rules of engagement. If it's fully through the students and student-led, they're more likely to be accountable to each other and less likely to ghost the council entirely. Now she focuses on about 42 different students that come from around the state to be able to participate at the Capitol. They also do Zoom meetings throughout the year to be able to come up with large legislation recommendations that they then present to the state legislature, which is such a cool program for them to be able to do. But she really emphasized that while it's exciting to talk about the youth-led work that they're going to be doing, it's more important that the mentors are there to help guide those real-world skills, like making meetings and digesting and compiling the data that you might get from the survey to be able to come to conclusions of what to be able to tackle. And so we really want to make sure, again, that mentors are involved, but that this is student-led. One of the biggest things I got out of the Broomfield Teen Council is that there was the mentor that really offered up her help to one of the students to be able to get the final paperwork for the venue. And the student pushed back and said, no, I really want to do this. And it really just shows that the students that are going to be involved in this are going to be incredibly motivated to want to do this work and that we just have to step back and let them.
Counselor Oom?
Thank you, Mayor. And first off, just want to thank everybody's effort on this. This is something that, and you know, Councilmember Holte was really excited about and Mayor Stites, you know, having council be there, you know, advocating for civic is really important to me. I've been a little bit involved in the high school and teaching and I really appreciate all the data that went into this, you know, looking at what, all the different questions and the answers. I was really kind of surprised that a lot of them, when asked what they wanted to do, that they said event plan. And, but the, the one question I have is comparing, and I'm really glad that you went and checked out some of the other council, you know, to really see it. I think, I think we all learn a lot when we, you know, go somewhere, somewhere different. Did you find that the proposal of having the high schoolers mentor middle school, was that something that each of these other, you know, Broomfield and Boulder, for instance, is that what they were doing? Or is this something that we're doing as a pilot project?
Yeah, for Boulder specifically, no. This wasn't something that they were doing. This was kind of imagined, I would say. I mean, I'm actually not familiar as much with Broomfield, right? That's what you called out. For specifically Boulder, they hadn't, there was just high school. There was specific high school students there.
And for Broomfield, I got to actually talk to not just the Broomfield Teen Council, but the Broomfield Public Health Youth Project, who also leads a teen organization for the health department of Broomfield. Both try to their best to include multiple age groups, but they have a really big difficulty in getting engagement from younger kids. And so this is really a pilot program that we came up with after we did all this research with the other councils to be able to try to make this as inclusive and comprehensive as possible. I mean, again, we're really trying to find a way to engage the entire youth community. And so we're really hoping to be able to find ways to engage not just high schoolers' voices.
And was there, another question real quick. Was there a, ever a conversation about student council members potentially going to DC at the National Youth of Cities? Was that ever brought up?
That wasn't brought up for what we're recommending, but that is something that a lot of the other youth councils do and recommend. This budget that we recommended for food and drink would be the starter program. But a lot of these teen councils use these budgets to also go on field trips, not just DC. But the Broomfield Teen Council actually goes over to Oklahoma because they have a sister city in the tribes in Oklahoma where they go and they actually get to experience the indigenous youth community and what they go through and bring that back and try to educate their peers as well. And so we're hoping that through future iterations, we'll have a budget that will allow these kids to be able to take those kinds of trips, to be able to have those experiences outside of Wheat Ridge and bring those experiences and learned skills back.
Thank you.
Counselor Snell?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this. This is an amazing, amazing idea, an amazing project. I know that y'all have worked a ton on this, and I'm grateful. I think that this is, I'm so happy to see this moving along because this is something I think that a lot of our youth could really benefit from and also us as a council and therefore us as a community. So kind of building on the question that Counselor Oma asked and thinking about the council interacting with or having the middle schoolers as their constituents. When you're, when you're talking with other groups about their versions of this, did you see different levels of engagement more so with the current city council? Can you talk a little bit about how each group worked with the city council? Because I know in this recommendation, there's a mentor from our council. Did any, did any other groups have any other experiences with that?
Thornton did not. Yeah, they, they did, they did not have, they did not have interaction. They had, well, they have a paid person on staff that is their, you know, the lead, the lead mentor. But as far as, she didn't ever talk about that they had any kind of interaction with council. Okay.
So for Boulder, they also had someone who was like a full-time staff member whose job was to, you know, make sure that the youth council was functioning and that he would, the liaison essentially between city council and this youth advisory group. And he would bring, my understanding, the way that we had the discussion, was he would bring the opportunities or projects that the city overall was interested in having youth councils voice on or their participation in spearheading. And they would kind of work to decide which one they would want to move forward with together. So he really acted as liaison there when it came to engaging the city council.
Same for Broomfield. Broomfield had a paid staff member, and it is something that we would love to recommend is getting a paid staff member. But we really wanted to be conscious of staff's time of being able to commit. And we also wanted to create some more flexibility of the variety experiences brought to this youth council through mentors. So we really wanted a city council member to show up. Because city council members show up to committees and boards as well because there is a council member that is delegated to a committee and a board. And so we really wanted to make sure that the youth council was getting a similar treatment as what they would see. as what they would see in the city of Wheat Ridge. We also wanted to make sure that there would be space if mentors didn't have the time to be able to go to every meeting, another mentor could step in as well. We wanted to give that substitute in.
Sure. Yeah, I really like that structure. And it's also different, which I like. And it's also the first iteration, so there's always room for growth and change. But I, I too have seen the youth delegates at NLC conferences, conference, because I've only been to one so far. But incredible experience, I know for them, the, the looks on their faces throughout the, the entire conference was just like, I, I'm sure they were just really enjoying themselves. And the, the interactions that I saw and the presentations that I saw were just, I think, such a great experience for them. And I'm excited for, I'm already excited for our youth council to get to go do something like that. So thank you so much. I know it's a ton of work, so great job. Thank you.
Counselor Ong.
Thank you. I just had one quick question. It sounds like that this might be looking for like a council liaison. Is that correct in the future?
Yes.
One suggestion I would, I would make is, I know sometimes a lot of the committees that council members are on, they're, you know, four to plus years. I think every council member that's on and our future one really has something unique to offer. And I would suggest that perhaps we rotate the council members like every year and everybody would have a little bit different perspective. So that's just a suggestion. Thank you.
I love that recommendation because these are all your constituents as well. It'd be great for every one of you to be able to hear their voices and what they want.
Any other questions from council? Well, thank you. This was a fantastic presentation. I think you've given us a lot to look at. And I think this is something we might see here in Wheat Ridge in the near future. It's pretty amazing. Great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next up, we have... One more, yeah, let's, yeah. Just make sure your green light is on, on your microphones, and then speak into them.
All right, our next presentation up is Neighborhood Mediation. So I'll have everyone introduce themselves here and share if they're a member, a mentor.
I'm Officer Joe Mallory. I'm one of the School Resource Officers and Business Liaison for the Wheat Ridge Police Department. And I am one of the mentors for this group.
My name's Katie and I'm a community member and volunteer.
I'm Andy, also community member and volunteer as part of this project.
Kristin Mykranz. I am the Assistant Principal at Everett. I was one of the mentors.
Kylie Fisher. I'm a police officer with Wheat Ridge and I currently work as a School Resource Officer and I was a mentor.
Okay, all right. We'll go through the agenda real quick and then we'll get into it. First time, all right. So we'll go through why we need mediation to give a little bit of background as to what we were asked for by the, by the city and where, what we found. What we found regarding mediation as well as what we found to support the recommendation that we'll be presenting. Going through the solution recommendation and then the next steps, so.
So one of the things that happens in cities and neighborhoods and schools and people have little arguments and there are things that you complain about with your neighbors or your friends. And sometimes you know the people well enough to go and have a discussion with them. A lot of times you do not know them well enough. And so one of the goals is to resolve conflicts without police intervention and be able to talk to one another and get to know one another a little better. One of the things that I really feel passionate about is neighborhood and community involvement and getting to know the people around you. One of the things people don't do anymore is going out and talking to each other and sharing ideas and having block parties and watching movies together and things like that, which is one of the passions I have by my volunteering with local works. And I spend a lot of time in my own neighborhood, trying to connect people and trying to make sure everybody's taken care of. So the goal was to reduce the police involvement and then we can reduce the issues and conflicts by bringing people together by other sources. For example, the local events we have are very robust, very diverse. And these are places where people can go and get to know each other. So as neighbors become familiar with each other, less conflict will arise naturally.
Yeah, and actually just adding on to it, I think is through this project, also, found or realized that a lot of the civic, I'm saying that right, civic, civic issues? Civil. I still messed it up. Okay. Civil issues that come up between, between neighbors are for, you know, non-ticketable offenses that there's, there's no ordinances, there's no laws that are being broken, but it's just issues and disagreements between, between people that really, you know, it's easy to call the police, the police. But there's really nothing that, that, that can be done. And it's using, you know, resources that definitely should be leveraged elsewhere. There we go. Okay. So did quite a bit of research. Unfortunately, one of our members, Roger, who did most of the call downs across a number of organizations and specialists in the area, he couldn't join us tonight. But for a little bit, for a little bit of history and context, there were mediation services that the city of Wheat Ridge could leverage up until about the end of 2021. That's when, that was through Jefferson County. But that, those services were discontinued. And then at that point, cities within the county either had nothing or went in a couple of different directions. For Wheat Ridge itself, there was a third-party service called Opal that people could be referred to. But once they were referred to this, this program, there really wasn't any information as to what the outcomes were, whether it was used, whether it was helpful. So there, it was kind of, it was a bit of a black hole. What we also found when we talked to other, other cities in the area, like I'll use Lakewood as an example, they did end up creating their own mediation, set of mediation services through a lot of volunteers, recruiting volunteer lawyers who were trained in mediation. So it took, it was quite a, quite resource and time-intensive finding those people. I think on the record, as, as we talked to a few of the, the people involved with that, they said if they had to do it over again, they probably wouldn't, which is, you know, a bit telling. In addition to saying Boulder, where they have, they have a robust mediation, set of mediation services, but they also have two full-time staff at a cost of around $180,000 a year. So, you know, there's pros and cons to each. A number of other neighboring cities still don't have any services or they've provided some guidance on their website as to how to be neighborly, which, which is nice. But the effectiveness probably isn't where we'd want it to be. So after going through all that and in the midst of that research, we actually came upon the Mediation Association of Colorado, or the MAC, which I will just skip the syllables and refer to that going forward. Thank you. You were working the clicker. So the Mediation Association of Colorado is, is actually a new organization that is starting, starting a pilot. But it's a management organization that offers onboarding, promotion, reporting, and then the mediation services themselves. It's a few, I think about two or three existing organizations in Colorado, which are kind of coming together underneath the umbrella of this Mediation Association of Colorado. And it's really being purpose-built or is purpose-built to offer these services to communities and cities within Colorado. So short version is, wow, this is a great fit. That's just what we were, just what we were looking for. So we have, we, we attended a webinar and which, in addition to the members of the MAC who presented there, there are also quite a few other city representatives that were on that as well, that were interested, including Boulder, including Lakewood, including North Carolina and a number of others as well, so. So a few of the, thank you. The benefits of joining, of joining MAC are around the, the resources they offer or when we say ads and resources, they're, they actually have a lot of the, the information on what's, what's available. So as far as even creating content and getting information out, they have a lot of that already available. They have an onboarding system. That's everything from being able to call in through a phone number, just picking up the phone, to actually getting mediation services through an app. So their goal is to actually work with as many neighboring communities as possible so that there's, there's consistency as well as it provides for any possible overlap. If it's, you know, somebody between Wheat Ridge and Lakewood and Arvada, of course, that would never happen. But let's just say for the sake of argument, it did. It would be under an umbrella organization for that. And we did, there is some cost to, to the MAC. There's an annual, there's an annual fee that is around, that is associated with the number of cases that are handled. We still have to get a better idea of how many cases would really need to be. We, what, how many cases we have a need for in, in Wheat Ridge. But when we went to do some comparison on what the cost is or a, you know, a per-call cost for when a police department is, is called out, what we found for the numbers that were, that were public in Colorado, that ranges from about $500 to $700 per call that is made where the, where the police are engaged in whatever it might be. Now that, you know, so just to put that in perspective. So there is some cost to this, but the avoidance of much greater costs is a huge benefit that we see for this. So. So surprise, surprise, our recommendation is that we should not actually create our own mediation program. I think from, from what we've learned, what, what it would take to do that, as well as the feedback that we've gotten from other communities that have done that. Participating in the, the MAC pilot program is a, is a good next step. They're actually starting this next year. I'll go into that a little bit more in just a few moments here. But also along with garnering and using the mediation services with the MAC, we also have a little bit more to add to it.
What I spoke about earlier, the local works and the city events would be a good place to, to present it to the public because the MAC will have brochures and information available for us to use so that we can talk to people one-on-one and share with them. And then also hopefully we can utilize some of the committees where volunteers like us are, are involved on the ground, planning events and working with, with partners in progress for businesses and things like that. Giving it, getting the word out will be a lot easier because we have a connection already through local works with the city.
And getting the word out will be, I would say, a hurdle and important part of this too. Because once we have the services, one of the, one of the major avenues that that would be, what people would know about is when they, when they call the police and it could be referred to the mediation services under the right, under the right circumstances. But just even making it, having that awareness within the community that this is also an option. This is available to them. And also the ability to learn more about different, different ways to interface with each other versus, you know, calling the police department, so. So for the next steps, I, as, you know, in a line with the recommendation to participate in the, in the MAC pilot, they're, they're currently starting recruitment. So we'd like to actually, the next step would be to submit as part of being part of that pilot. And they want to actually start the implementation in March of 2026. And then once the pilot is live and we actually have access to those services, then coordinating with local works and other city events for the awareness, then, you know, we can put all the plumbing in place, as it were, so.
It worked out that the timeline was just perfect. And so our last slide is just a little, this is taken from the MAC presentation that we saw online. They're talking about having about a year and a half from now. It's when things will be kind of finalized and we'll have some metrics to look back on and see how successful it was. If we want to continue to be involved or if we need a different, a different solution. Thank you for your time.
We'll go to questions from council. All right, Counselor Quinn.
Thanks, guys. This is, this is really kind of cool with some recent things that have happened here within the city. It makes me wonder how this would work in those instances. Noise being a primary thing probably moving forward. Pat doesn't cut his weeds like I like, so do you call the police? Or do you, how does it start, I guess? Is, is that, is it a phone call? My neighbor calls and says, I wish Pat would trim his weeds and get his car out of his lawn. How does that, can you explain how that works?
Yeah, so when, when that call is, is made about your weeds, at that point, they could be referred to it, you know, based on the civil issue. All right, got it. Where it's, you know, there, there's no laws broken, there's no ordinances that are broken. Then they would be referred to, whoever be, would be answering that call could refer them to that. That would, that would, that's, my guess is that's probably going to be 80 to 90% of the way that most people get referred to this and even have, have knowledge of it. So that would be, that would be the first step. And then it would be, hey, here's, here's a service that you can use. This is, you know, this is a civil issue. Here's a service, service you can use to, to work together to resolve this. Because one of the things that we, that is actually exciting about this is actually people resolving it, both having to agree to it versus something being imposed on someone. Well, this is the way it is. So you get what you want, you just have to put up with it. It's with mediation, it's actually an agreement between the parties involved where they both work together on it, so.
And if I can follow it up, the, there is a QR code.
Use the microphone.
A QR code or a phone number or a website. But those things, the goal, the ultimate goal is to get the two people together to talk with a mediator who is an impartial party. They're making a decision for you. They're helping people to be respectful and communicate effectively. So there, that is the ultimate goal, even though we've only mentioned like getting to hold them on the phone and stuff. We do, we do envision people coming together to have conversations, two neighbors getting to know each other better and agreeing on a solution, like Andy said.
Great. Yeah, I, I've had a little experience with mediation in my job with the union hall where we couldn't even be in the same room with the contractor because it was a little heated. And of course, nothing was binding, but they were able to go back and forth and say, hey, what about this? And then we, you know, get somewhere towards the middle to where we, we'd have something we could, we could present. So with the, with the, would you, would, would someone call the police and say, this guy's weeds are 10 feet high? And then the police would say, hey, you guys need to go to mediation. I, I'm kind of trying to figure out, I think this is a great idea, number one. And we'd support something like this. But I'm just kind of curious how you would start that process.
So when you make a 911 call or call non-emergency, you'll speak to a call taker. My thought is that we make call takers familiar with this or dispatchers. But if they aren't, then obviously it'll get dispatched to a police officer. The police officer can... The police officer can call the reporting party and inform them of the MAC program, if that's what we go with, or whatever program the police department and city goes with, and suggest that they go down that route. And we can, we do what we call a civil standby too, where we can stand outside to help the, keep the peace, but try to get the word out that way is how I imagine it'll go for the most part. So many people are so used to calling the police. But like they said, with brochures, getting that out at city events also, they can just call in prior to thinking about calling the police as well.
And, and also just to clarify on that, if the weeds are 10 feet tall, that's definitely an ordinance issue. So it would not go to mediation, code enforcement.
Yeah, some examples that we've dealt with and I've dealt with personally are like, the neighbors, like, they don't like how bright their lights are, or they don't know how to speak to each other appropriately about their dog being on their lawn, something like that. But obviously, if weeds are too high, that is a ordinance violation. And so then the CSOs or police would go out.
I'm Moet, so anyhow, I appreciate this, you guys did a lot of hard work, and I think this has a, has a value within the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilor Cotta.
Thank you, Mayor. In the document that we, that we got, the, it lists eight cities. I heard some more cities that are probably in a place where they're considering participation. I think my question that I had originally, when I was reading this, is, is kind of half answered, but I want to dig into it a tiny bit more. The, the list that it had here, these eight cities are either participating or interested in joining. There's a recruitment process that's happening January, February 2026. That's when cities decide whether or not they're going to be participating in it. MAC is that new, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the, I wanted to ask then, because I didn't see too much in the document about a compare and contrast between the Jefferson County program that, that went away in 2021 and the MAC program. I, are there, are there differences or similarities between those two programs that, that you guys could explain to us to help us understand a little bit about the gap that was created and then the proposal for something to fill it?
That is a great question. We, we don't actually have information on specifics on the program and how much it was actually used when it was under the Jeffco services.
It's understandable with the program going away, it'd be hard to do some kind of-
But that, I mean-
Well, they were, they used the Opel, but the, the thing that was missing was the metrics and the number of involvement or number of calls used, and those things weren't-
Well, that was, that was, Wheat Ridge was using Opel, correct, right? Yeah, Jefferson County had, I understand, was their, was their own. But that, that does, that is in alignment with a common thread that we found is that it's hard to get, it's been hard to get data on use, effectiveness, and ROI. Which is where a lot of the, the focus that MAC has on specific and continuous reporting is very attractive because of that. That, that actually is kind of head and shoulders above. Assuming that, because it is new, assuming that they deliver on that, just to be, just to be fair, be head and shoulders above what we've, what we've heard from, from the past or even other, other municipalities and their programs right now, so.
Thank you. Do we have a sense of, of which municipalities are, are very likely to join and participate in this program? Might be another tough question, I'm kind of asking a little unfair questions, but.
The ones that were present in the presentation, there were quite a few around Colorado and some Front Range, Jeffco cities, Lakewood, Boulder. Boulder is already, is one of the keystone cities working towards this.
It's really good to know.
Because they've had such a successful program.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
Right, Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor, thanks, guys, for the presentation. I just have one question on the mediation, mediation outcome data. There's a little graph on the bottom, on that bottom left, and it says AI initiated and CRS initiated. What, and then what do those numbers represent? Like, what is that graph?
We don't have that graph in front of us right now, I'm sorry.
Because it has like a, it goes 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 on the left, and then it's got like 1 through 30 in the bottom and showing, I'm just trying to make sense of what's going on with that.
Yeah, I think we'd have to follow up with you on that, because I-
That's fine, but thank you, guys.
They were, one of the recruiting is, is using AI and stuff, but generally speaking, this is not an AI mediation, it's in-person speaking with-
Actually, actually, the intake, the intake is being done with using AI tools just to, to actually speed the intake. None of the mediation or the interaction is, has anything to do with any of those tools, in case that was-
That just caught my ear when you said-
Which was one of my curiosities too, when I first heard that, I was like, really? But it's actually speeding the intake of gathering information and getting people into the system so they can take advantage of the services, but it's not involved in delivering those mediation services at all.
Councilor Holteen.
Thank you, I'll be quick. I, I just want to comment, I like the metrics-oriented, you know, joining the MAC to really understand how is it working, and I like the scaling across municipalities with a specific, like, I think mediation within neighborhoods is a little different than a lot of other mediations. So the specificity and sort of the, the learning cycle of this feels really valuable to me. I'm just curious, so we talked a little bit about the process, would this be like a self-referral? And then the city offers it and anyone can take advantage of it? Or would this be really like referrals through our own CSOs and police department for being able to take advantage of the program?
I imagine it could be both ways, honestly. Because if they have the pamphlet and they just take the initiative to call on themselves, they can. Or it could be a referral from the police or CSO. If we've started an investigation and determined that there's nothing, no laws that have been broken or anything that we can do on our end, that we can refer them also, if that makes sense.
It does, it does, and I just, I think when you were talking about the light shining too bright, that is my neighbors that I'm pretty sure you were referring to. And it's been really heartbreaking, it's two neighbors that are literally like a house down from me. And a light shining too brightly into a backyard like broke their relationship and has created tension like at our block parties, and it's been really sad to see that happen. And, and so to have seen some support between that, I think, could have been a different outcome. So I personally have experienced on my own block a real need and benefit for this. So I think we're stronger communities and we can really support people to get through that in, in different ways. So anyway, thank you for your work on this, and I'm excited that there's, there's a really viable option for us to offer.
We already have a really good foundation to follow up on that one as well because of the, the city plan implementation, we had neighborhood champions. We have, you know, somebody said one time that I remember clearly, Wheat Ridge is a city of islands, and each island sort of has its own little culture and its own little, the way all the houses look and the way people interact. And when you go to someone else's island, you're like, wow, this is cool. But you get, in between those islands, you know, there's going to be a certain set of people or sometimes one or two people in particular that really kind of pull through. And those came forward as the neighborhood champions when we did the city plan. And so we do have some of those connections already made that we can share some of this information with. Because we, I was one of the people who did those presentations, like trying to get people out of their shell to come and get their input for the development, because this is what we're doing. And I was like, bring your kids, like, they're going to be the ones living here, you know? And so we had a really nice, I have, I have a really nice neighborhood, so I'm lucky in that way. But it's like, when you say the neighborhood's relationships are broken, that's really heartbreaking. And then we're going to try to work past that with the city involvement, but also, you know, with the block parties and the different things that we can do to network people on a fundamental level.
Councilor Larson.
And thank you, Mayor, and this, it does sound like a, something that we prob, we probably should have already looked at this. I mean, it's, it's overdue, it's, the, the time is right, it sure sounds like. I have a beef with my neighbor, can I call and request mediation? And who would pay for that?
So, yes, you can request, you can request directly. There, there are fees, I think, I think that's a question that's, that still has to be answered.
Well, you could hire an expensive attorney and have that attorney do the mediation and spend a lot of money, or. If this program, so I, I guess then, the, it, it seems like the, sort of the, the way we start is that a neighbor calls the police on another neighbor, and, and then they get referred. Do we now have any way for the police department to tell us about how many of these sort of calls that would qualify, because they record, you know, calls for service, about how many would happen in a year?
So are you saying going forward or in the past?
Say the past three or four years.
So it's, I went and tried to track down data, and it's very hard to find exact, specific data. I would have to read through every single call for service from the timeline because when they're called in, it's titled how they describe it. So some are titled harassments, and then they're just unfounded harassments, or they might be disturbances. So they get titled currently as kind of any call for service based off what they're describing, and then it may be unfounded by the police, or if it is like a ticketable, ticketable offense, then obviously a crime's been broken. So going forward, I think it'd be helpful to be able to track the data a little bit better. But at this time, it's hard, I did talk to some current patrol officers, and there's at least five neighbors and people that they can think of that would need this at the moment. Based on my experience too, on patrol, one summer I dealt with the same neighbors, probably about 15 calls that, just in one summer.
It, it's mostly anecdotal then, yeah.
Yeah. I can say it's needed, but it's just hard to track data.
Yeah, and then finally, I, I have a beef with my community, my HOA. And I get upset about it, and the police get called because I'm arguing with the HOA president with that qualify, because we're talking about it, not an individual on an individual, this is an individual versus a organization, a community.
Yeah, it, it's not limited to individual and individual, it can be individual business, individual with organization, between organizations, between businesses. Tenant landlord, so it's not, it's not limited to individuals.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions?
This is great, I think we have a lot of new city councilors here, but this will be like something you hear, you get calls, you get emails quite a bit, and it's problems that the police can't solve, and it's not something the city can solve. So this is, seems like a great way to go. So thank you for your presentation, it was fantastic.
Thank you. Oh, hold on, Councilor Quinn just raised her, raised his hand.
One more that just kind of came in, through the carousel, in my mind. Could this be used, for instance, barking dog, loud bird, right? And instead of going to, through the court system, and maybe this is a question for Patrick, I don't know, but could it be used, or could the judge say, look, you guys go to mediation instead? Or we're going to issue citations?
I would say it could be used for that, more so because I've seen where we get a lot of barking dog complaints, but by the time anybody's able to go out, there's nothing that can be heard, so nothing happens. So I think it would be good, right then and there, for them to offer the mediation so that they can talk with each other and feel comfortable talking to each other. Because I think that's one thing that we're having problems with at the moment is they're just not comfortable talking to each other, and so I think mediation would help with that, but yeah, I think so.
I was just going to add to that. Theoretically, I, I think it'd be ultimately up to the discretion of the municipal court and the judge, but I think that potentially could also be an option in their back pocket, should they want to use that. I'm speaking a little bit of out term with that, but yeah, I think I have seen instances of restorative consequences or some type of diversion plan used once criminal charges have been assigned to basically work through the situation in a less punitive fashion. So theoretically, yes.
Cool, yeah, because I had a neighbor across the street, can't remember what it, what it was, but sh, her and the other neighbor, they had some kind of feud or whatever, and it wound up in mediation at Jeffco, I think, when they had it. I think it was, they, he left for work at 4:00 in the morning and turned the truck on, and it was loud, woke Michelle up and blah, 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 got a little, got a little crazy there at the end. But I think they went to mediation, come up with something, I don't remember what it was, but it, it turned out, there was, I didn't see the police show up, so I'm assuming everything was kosher.
Anybody else? All right, let's give a little round of applause for these guys. Anything else on this one? Marianne, anything else on this one?
Anything else on this, or?
Nope. Okay. Fantastic, we're going to move on from item number one to item number two, our city, city council district three vacancies. Before the meeting, we drew the names for the, for the order for this. So we will start with Justin Slocum for his five-minute presentation. You can do it at the podium, or you can have a seat at the table, up to you. That's up to you. You're welcome to have a seat if you'd like. Why don't you go ahead and have a seat, unless you've got a reason to stand, you can have a seat.
Mayor, I have a quick question. Mayor, can I ask a process question?
Oh, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So are we going to hear from our candidates, and then we ask the questions after the candidate?
Yeah, so we will give them a five-minute presentation, and we'll have the city manager do the timing on that.
Yeah, I can do the timing, yep. We gave each candidate up to five minutes for a presentation, and then we were planning to do any, any follow-up questions council may have after that.
Are we asking the question while the candidate's sitting here? Or do we listen to all five and then ask questions of all five?
Yes, one at a time.
One at a time.
Okay, right, that was the question, thank you.
Yeah, one at a time. All right, Mr. Slocum, when you are ready, sir.
Well, good evening, everybody, thanks for having me. Thanks, Mayor and Council, and our city manager, Patrick. I am, I'm here, I filled out an application, which is kind of odd to me for a council seat, but I want to thank the 1,317 certified voters that have supported me to be here. I want to continue to serve the city council mission that I had promised them. And I would like to do it, you know, respectfully and with dignity, building relationships with the community and our council and our city government. It's important to me to continue that mission. Those people invited me into their homes, they expressed their concerns and praises, they confided in me about their, you know, wants and wishes for the city. A lot of them have contributed financially substantial amounts of money to see me have a seat on this council. And I'm in a unique position here tonight, I'm the only one that put myself out there. And I think everybody on this council knows what it's like to have to put your name on that ballot and, you know, put a target on your back and go to work. It's a tremendous amount of work, you know, and it, it was a rewarding amount of work that I didn't expect. The people really, really blessed me with embracing, you know, the, the conversations and, and bringing me into their homes and, and talking to, you know, these constituents, these neighbors of mine. I've made amazing relationships. As far as, you know, qualifications go, I've, I've got tremendous qualifications in management throughout my career. I've done amazing things in my career that are cutting edge. I've had some of the largest companies in the world fly me places because I was able to solve problems. And I did that through building relationships and, and truly asking questions and learning how to solve problems. And that, and that takes a village, and you have to respect the people that get you there. Ideas in this world are very rare when they're, you know, they're not new, they're, they're old ideas, and you just kind of have to find the pieces of the puzzle and put them together. And that's what this council has to do every week, dealing with these constituents. We have to find ways to come up with a plan, you know, that gets us there. We're not always going to agree on those things. We're not always going to agree on those things. We're not going to be able to necessarily agree with one another, but we need to find ways to work together as a community to find the best way to forge forward with a successful plan that meets the needs of this community. And I'm really hopeful that I can be one of the people sitting at these tables, you know, building relationships with each and every one of you, trying to find ways to come up with a plan and make those dreams happen. Thank you.
We will go to questions from councils. Councilor Okada.
Thank you, Justin. On your application and on the campaign trail, you mentioned community engagement and managing traffic as kind of core things, core goals that you had that you wanted to get done. What kind of specific either ordinances or actions or resolutions would you, would you plan to bring to the council in order to achieve some of those goals? And it doesn't have to be the ones that I mentioned here, but it could be.
Well, as far, as far as ordinances go, I don't have, obviously, an ordinance book in front of me to start talking about ordinances. But I think we need to definitely have open discussions, you know, and find ways to engage the constituents in each affected area, to find out what, what they're seeing. They live there, they know what, you know, they know what the problems are, they see day to day. Whether it's, you know, an increase in bicycle traffic or, you know, an increase in speeding cars, we need to be able to identify those things because as, as council people, we see the problems and we know that a lot of engagement doesn't happen in this community, necessarily organically. There's a certain amount of people that'll be outraged and they'll say things, but that doesn't necessarily speak to the, to the majority of the community. So we need to really find ways to get out there, get that information out there and try to drive that engagement and find ways to solve these problems. For instance, you know, with, with the way we design the roads, which ways we choose in the, in the plan to, to, you know, increase sidewalk capacity or sidewalk capacity at all, where there's no sidewalks. Which side of the street are we expanding? Are we gonna take somebody's well-established yard in lieu of a ditch, for instance? What are the implications of that ditch? Why are we trying to save it? These things, these questions need to be asked and it needs to be communicated out there so we can get buy-on from the stakeholders. So they understand the choices that are being made and to reduce some of that outrage from the community. Again, not everybody's gonna be happy with the plan and growth has to happen. You know, we have to do things to increase, you know, the productivity of the city. We have to have a plan that is sustainable for the future. And all these things take, you know, a lot of planning and a lot of, you know, intricate detail that a lot of the citizens aren't gonna be engaged with. And they, and they need to, you know, know that we're there to help them with those resources when they need them. And they have somebody they can trust to talk to, to give them the facts.
Thank you, Justin.
Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. One specific question about something that the council has just done within the past year, and that's approve the police department's use of what's called Avis, Automotive Vehicle Information System, and that boils down to speed cameras. If you were on the council at that time, how would you have voted on that issue?
On the speed cameras?
Yes.
I, I personally would have wanted to ask a lot of questions at these meetings, at these planning meetings, to get a true understanding of the reasoning behind it. If, if slowing down traffic is the goal, I would like to see the statistics of how already implemented cameras have affected that in other areas. Without having those facts, there's no possible way I can give you an answer because, again, we have to find ways to, to do things the right way, not the knee-jerk way, I guess is what I'd like to say. It's, it's important to me to understand that, first off, it looks like a revenue scheme is what it looks like to me. And that's what it looks like to the citizens. The people that have brought me into their homes have asked that very same question. And I don't have the data to tell them one way or the other. It is, it is a conversation that I have had, Dan. And it looks to me like revenue. Being a supporter of law enforcement, a staunch supporter of law enforcement and a, and a really big proponent of safety, we need to find tools to keep the speeding, you know, down to, to, you know, prevent pedestrian injuries, bicycle injuries and other, you know, automotive injuries. I mean, 44th and Kipling is a, is a disaster for major accidents. Working for the Department of Transportation, I see fatalities daily. So finding ways to be, you know, interactive and find tools to, to slow down these people and get people home at night really is a passion, but doing it the right way is important.
Any other questions? Councilor Quinn.
Not necessarily a question, but, but comment. Just wanted to say thanks for being out there, for putting your name out there for the, for the campaign and putting your name in the hat here. I think we have five, we did have six people that want to be involved with the city and I appreciate it.
Thank you. You were a good opponent.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Slocum, we appreciate your time. Next up, we have Maki Delight.
First, there you go, Mayor State and members of council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to come talk to you. My name is Maki Delight. I've been a Wheat Ridge resident in District Three for nearly three decades. And, and professional side, I've been a, my husband and I own the business in District Three for nearly three decades. So on my work, I do project management and quality assurance as far as all, as was, sharing my marketing expertise to my clients. And I also do networking and making connection with the local business owners. And through that, I've been involved with a Wheat Ridge Business Association for a long time and the 10-plus years of which I've been on the board and five of which I have been a president of the board. I am a strong advocate for small business as some of the people mentioned. And my first priority that I'm looking at is to promote open communications, helping create ways to draw positive attention from the citizens and find ways to stay in, in touch with people in the district. It's very important. And my second priority is to attract new businesses and retain existing one with streamlining process that they can follow along. And with that, specifically in 20 years that I've been involved with the city ribbon cuttings, sometimes we run into this issue of the businesses not realizing the city requires business license. And we can't do ribbon cutting without them having city business license, you know, something like that. That streamlined system that help guide them every step of the way so that they are, it's easier for them to start business, bring business here and start it in Wheat Ridge and keep it sustainable or keep it going, I think will be a great asset. And then the, my goal with the concept is a cool Wheat Ridge where our city is so cool that everybody want to bring their business to us. And my third priority is to attract the balance, balance ratio of large and small businesses. And because if they hire the workers locally, that also helps with the revenue, tax revenue base. And then that also, you know, promotes the, the prosperity. Speaking of which, recently published Prosperity Plan, you know, focusing to attract the light manufacturing jobs and innovative jobs like expanding from the clear click maker space, I think that would be a great way to make it, you know, have people manufacture, make it and then ship it or sell it from Wheat Ridge, what that turns around and attract people. People will travel to Wheat Ridge to do business or to buy those cool items that we produce. I think that would be a great, you know, opportunity. And from my experience, businesses do better when they build a relationship first. The business who don't go away. So we need to play to the strengths of small town feel of Wheat Ridge and it all needs strengthen our community more. Because our community is made of both residents and businesses and many business owners also choose to live in Wheat Ridge like my husband and I did. It creates the best of the interest in them to working with the community so that for them to be successful, so in order to, for them to do that, they have to invest in infrastructure as well as maintaining, improve attractive business to the community as well. So promoting tight-knit community where neighbors care and respect each other and with businesses become a part of neighborhood with neighborly concerns and care creates a win-win situation. And heart of successful business is business, in, a heart of the successful business, small business is a relationship building. So, and I am a naturalized citizen, I choose to be here, I want to be here and I want to give back to the community that gave me so much that I benefit every day from. So thank you for this time.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a little bit longer question, I'll try to go slowly, but sales tax revenue is the primary revenue source for the city. Which of the following four phrases most closely reflects your philosophy on local sales tax? One, the sale, the tax rate is too high and must be lowered even if it means sacrificing services to citizens. Number two, the tax rate is too low and should be raised in order to provide more services to citizens. Three, the tax rate should be marginally adjusted either up or down in reaction to annual fluctuations in city revenues and respending priorities. Or four, the tax rate should stay where it is, additional sources of funding should be looked at. And I know that was, that was a complex, that was a lot, but I'm just trying to get a gauge of.
Yes. Can I say five? That, because, well, the tax, taxes will, low or high, you know, it really depends what's being provided as revenue is brought in, what it's being used for. And I think that for the city government to be conscious of how they're spending the tax dollars so that it is the benefits to the citizens, but if the service is providing values, I think citizens are happy to provide, you know, pay taxes. But if it's being misspent, and then they would have problem with that. So I think just making sure that taxes collected are spent on the way that benefits our citizens and that is being, again, that's being communicated all the time so that people understand why we're collecting that and why that's being spent there.
Thank you. Councilor Snow.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Maki, so much for your application and for stepping up. I would like to get a little bit of a sense on another subject. So as you know, and we're all experiencing in the greater Denver area, lots of folks want to live here. And so I'd like to hear your philosophy on how the city could handle that influx of folks, you know, if they're buying a house, if they need to rent because they're, you know, just getting started. I'd like to hear kind of your philosophy on housing in general and more specifically more affordable housing for our, you know, our workers, nurses, firefighters, police, things like that. So just, just a brief philosophy on that.
Very briefly, thank you. Thank you. I think like, as I mentioned in the speech, that beefing up the employer base of small and large businesses that, you know, pays them well and they are, then they are turn around and be able to afford those houses. And unfortunately, you know, the house cost, housing costs are going up and up. And there's never an opportunity where it goes down high, low, unless there's a horrible things happen and then the property value goes down. So I think it's the conscious planning and then also promoting the business to come in where they can pay more, pay people more so that they can afford it type of thing. Because, you know, it is really hard to make people charge less for their house that they buy. So that makes sense.
Any other questions? Councilor Okada.
Thank you, Maki. I wanted to ask, you identified in your application and in your presentation, communication being a very high priority of yours. If appointed to the position, what kind of plant, what kind of specific concrete plans do you have to be able to get engagement to occur? In your application, you specifically said the apathetic, the disengaged folks that, that don't speak up, and those voices are important too, I agree. But how would you get that communication to occur?
So there are several ideas that I have that I want to kind of try out and see because, you know, my policy when I work with my clients too is try something, if it doesn't work, make a small choice, a small change and then see if that works. If it doesn't work, make a small choice again, I mean, change again. So, you know, there are some ideas of, you know, having maybe regular copies with people or something like that. But also, you know, there are other ways that, and then promoting the neighborhood engagement more within the neighborhoods. I think that could also play a big role and to be able to extend the outreach even further.
Thank you. Councilor Holte.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Maki, for your time and your application. You know, Wheat Ridge is facing some pretty significant capital investments in the next couple of years. And, you know, you've, you've shared both in your application and your, your statement tonight, you know, just your depth of understanding and involvement with the business community. How do you see the city being able to partner with the business community for some of our big things? In particular, I'm thinking about the replacement of Anderson Pool, we're looking at relocating City Hall. And do you see opportunities for public-private partnerships to make those things come to fruition?
Yes, thank you for that. I think there are opportunities, but I think we want to think about the partnership, as you said. And there are lots of creative things that could happen, could implement to make this more easier or, or the transition easier and things like that. But one other thing I think is to making the businesses easier to open business in Wheat Ridge. And then that, you know, that really affects the, the economy and of, of the whole city. And then also that, you know, translates right into the tax revenue and things like that. But I think when people are feeling wealthy, that be able to afford their day-to-day items or things, they are more generous. And so I think instead of top-down, it needs to be partnership that where we work together with the community and businesses and the government together. There are, you know, in the past I've done something like that through business associations as well, but there's lots of ways. I think.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Maki, appreciate your presentation. Next up, we have- Next up, we have Simon McGowan.
Just hit the little button, make sure the light's green. Yeah. Okay. Hi. Um, I, you know, I want to start this by thanking all of you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Thank you all for taking the time to meet with me. I'm Simon McGowan and Wheat Ridge has been part of my life for decades. I grew up here. I went to high school here. I married somebody who's fourth generation. Is fourth generation Wheat Ridge. My father-in-law actually served as the Wheat Ridge Fire Chief here. And now my wife and I are raising our three daughters here, continuing a five-generation connection to this community. Two of our girls attend Prospect Valley and our oldest is at Everett after all three of them began at Everett, or at Color Strand. Living through the recent school closures, shifting boundaries and transition many families have faced has highlighted for me how essential, strong, stable neighborhoods are to Wheat Ridge. Schools anchor our community and when families have safe, walkable routes and feel connected to one another, the entire city benefits. At the same time, Wheat Ridge is attracting younger families again, which is exciting, but it also brings challenges around affordability, housing variety, and preserving the character that longtime residents value. Professionally, I'm a small business owner who works closely with local entrepreneurs, financial professionals. I've served on the board of the Wheat Ridge Business Association and participate actively in the Wheat Ridge Chamber of Commerce. And in that work, one of my biggest strengths and the one I lean on most is collaboration. I'm someone who builds strong, long-lasting relationships and believe deeply in working across perspectives to find solutions that serve the whole community. I also bring experience leading teams, managing budgets, and overseeing capital projects as Board President of the Applewood Knoll Swimming Tennis Club. That work, especially planning major improvements and navigating community input connects directly to efforts underway here, like rebuilding Anderson Pool. For me, community facilities aren't just amenities. They're places where neighbors meet, kids grow more confident, and our city's identity is strengthened. If appointed, I would bring a collaborative, steady, and strategic approach to the work of council. I'm a clear communicator, a strategic thinker with strong financial and analytical skills, and someone who is committed to long-term inclusive growth. As Wheat Ridge continues to evolve, I believe we have the responsibility to approach growth thoughtfully. That includes ensuring new development fits our neighborhood character, focusing on equitable infrastructure so that every part of Wheat Ridge sees investment and try in our housing and tie in our housing strategy to the needs of our local workforce, teachers, first responders, and small business employees who make this city run. These priorities align closely with the city plan, but also address areas I feel could be further explored. Lastly, I'm deeply committed to the long-term community improvements and inclusive growth. My family represents generations Wheat Ridge, my children being the fifth. I want to help guide the city through an important moment, one where we can strengthen our corridors like 38th Ave, improve mobility and safety, and ensure Wheat Ridge remains a place where neighbors know each other, where families plant roots, and where every resident feels a genuine sense of belonging. So looking ahead, I know there are several major initiatives already in motion that will require steady collaborative leadership. Anderson Pool, the future location of City Hall, and the city's long-term stormwater plan. And I'm not coming in here with predetermined answers, but I am coming ready to work side by side with each of you, with staff and our community. My goal is to help us ask the right questions, assess the financial and operational realities, and build solutions that strengthen Wheat Ridge for the next generation. Whether it's designing a community pool that truly serves our families, ensuring City Hall is accessible and functional for residents and staff, or making responsible investments in stormwater infrastructure. I'm committed to bringing a collaborative, analytical, and community-focused approach to each of these complex issues. And I also want to be upfront. I don't pretend to have all the answers. There will absolutely be things I don't know yet. But I am someone who learns quickly, listens closely, and asks thoughtful questions. What I can promise is that I'll show up with humility, curiosity, and collaborative mindset, and I'll do the work. Thank you for your consideration. It would be an honor to serve the residents of Wheat Ridge and help shape the next chapter of our community's story.
Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Okada.
Thank you, Simon. Given your background in finance and insurance, what kind of key indicators are you going to be looking for in Wheat Ridge to kind of assess the financial health and stability as we kind of move forward into the future?
So it's a, I mean, it would be a balanced budget type scenario, right? Like if we're, if we're going to show healthy books, we need to make sure that the revenues and the expenditures balance. There are large capital improvement projects that are coming this way and we need to be able to fund those. And that is going to take some, some unique financing maybe. And again, this kind of goes to where, you know, I don't know what I don't know, but I would say balanced budget is the short answer to your question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Counselor Holteen.
Thank you, Simon. Again, appreciate your time and I really appreciate you presenting, you know, an assessment of where we are and what it's going to take to get where we're going. In particular, appreciate, of course, as a pet advocate, you're, you know, just speaking to the needs of community members, especially getting through District 3 on 38th Avenue, as well as other things like Anderson Pool. District 3 has two biggies. It's got Lutheran, which is pretty well baked at this point. So lucky whoever is coming onto District 3 seat now, because the last council did a lot of hard work with that. But the other thing is the closure of Color Strand and that's a really important opportunity for the city and specifically for your district. I'd love to hear from you, like what kind of thoughts or ideas you might have around either the process to approach Color Strand or what it might be in service of the community.
I found, you know, we were very active during the school closure process. The three schools, right, Vivian, Color Strand, and Wilmore Davis all was a bit of a heartbreak to us. That, the data that was used for that, and I couldn't give you any actual numbers, but I feel is skewed. And this is probably pretty anecdotal, but a lot of the, a lot of the younger families that are living in the Applewood District 3 type area have moved here since COVID. We now have a problem with having a very large elementary school at Prospect Valley, 600-plus kids in this one school. But the preschool that was pegged to go there is not there. So the answer to your question is, I would love to see the building reutilized as some type of early learning facility, could be preschools, something like that. The land, and I understand we're sort of already thinking about this, it would be wonderful to see that as Wheat Ridge Public Park. That playground facility that is there, my wife actually worked alongside Brandon, the gentleman who writes the grants, and they built that. So we would hate to see that go. So that is, that would be my vision for college.
Great. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Counselor Larson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Simon, we've been here about communications with our constituents this evening. And can you offer a couple of specific things you would, you would do or maybe see if the city could somehow do to improve communications and maybe how we would get maybe some more feedback from the people that live in Wheat Ridge?
I really, I don't know. I think that, you know, the city offers, you know, things like council meetings that are open to the public, right? And they have their opportunity to be able to communicate in probably various different ways. As far, I don't know the answer to that. Like you, you give them, you could lead a horse to water, right? You can't make a drink. I feel like Wheat Ridge does a fine job of offering the ability to give them the ability to communicate, but people choose not to. So how do we get them to do that? That's beyond me. I don't know.
I can tell you that if you come up with the answer for that, you know, you'll win the prize.
Okay, good. I'll keep working on it.
Counselor Martel.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Simon, for your time and your application. Kind of along the lines of communication and engagement with your district, one of the roles of city council is to appoint our district community members to various boards and commissions and committees. How would you ensure proper or diverse representation from your district onto boards and commissions? And how would you try to get different voices to step forward in your community, in your district?
I think I would, I would start by just pulling from my own network, people that I know. We, we're very involved in everything in our community, whether that be swimming pools or, you know, schools or, or what. And we, we just know a good number of people out there that have pretty diverse backgrounds. So the first step would just be to pull from the network of people that we already know.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Snow.
Or if it ever pushed came to show, we would have to do special assessments to get us there. For Anderson Pool, it is a larger project by scale, by all measure. But there, there are some things that can be learned from what we have done. So we rebuilt our pool 12 years ago. It's a six-lane with a diving area and a sort of a zero-entry baby pool. That was a $200,000 project 12 years ago. Now we're talking 15 million to do Anderson or more. My first reaction is that seems high. So I would suggest, we ran out the bat, we would go search it for more people. More quotes, that's, I think that, yeah, I mean, you could hire out and get, you know, outside opinions on what that looks like, but in my experience, that doesn't, you're paying them a portion of what you're supposedly trying to put towards to fix.
Got it. Thank you, the infrastructure piece and just the knowledge of it is what I was kind of getting at. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any other, Counselor Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you bunch, Simon, for putting it out there like I said to Justin and I forgot to say to Maki, apologies, Maki, for, for applying and putting it out there. One thing that, that, that we're going to have to deal with in the very near future is stormwater issues and making a stormwater fee to fix all of the stormwater that we have. And we've got things in the works to, to come up with that. One thing I am concerned about a little bit is the affordability of that on people on fixed incomes, retirees mainly, or want to make sure that apartment complexes are going to probably be, I would assume, be charged more because they're going to have a bigger space, have more water to control. How do we go through that with, without increasing, without making it unaffordable for people on fixed incomes or keeping rents affordable, but also generating the income to fix that infrastructure? Any, any thoughts on that?
All the tough ones.
And maybe I should ask, is that appropriate to, or, and Patrick, is that appropriate to kind of ask?
I don't know if I have an answer for that either, but I think it's a totally appropriate question. I think that, I hope didn't overstep. Okay, good. You're right, if you're on a fixed income, even the smallest fee is going to throw that, it goes back to the balanced budget thing, that's going to throw your budget out the door, right? Is that equitable? If you're using stormwater and the cost of this, you know, cost of the drainage has gone up and we need to fix that infrastructure, then I think that, yeah, everybody has to pay a little bit. Maybe that's a tiered structure. I don't know what it is. If you're the landlord and you have a multi-unit apartment complex, you're going to be responsible for that, but are you going to pass that cost on to the renter? Probably. How do we stop that? I don't know how to do that either. Yeah, I mean, he's a tough question that I don't know the answer to, but I would think some type of a tiered fee structure based on whether or not you rent, own, rent or own would be.
Thanks, buddy. Appreciate, appreciate the answer. I know I'm kind of loaded with no real answer.
Yeah, so far I've had a lot of I don't know.
It's all right. I'm trying to, I'm just getting my feet wet here too.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. McGowan, for your time.
Thank you.
We'll go with Rebecca Growth next.
Hit the green, green light.
Okay. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mayor Stites. And city council members, thank you so much for taking time out of your busy week for meeting with me on an individual basis. I really appreciate the time you guys took and learned so much in just the short amount of time that I got to spend with each of you. So thank you for doing that. It's really opened my eyes to varied opportunities to contribute my efforts for the city. So, serving Wheat Ridge, I just wanted to, and Simon touched on it, but really practical collaborative leadership. I think that things that I've heard from each of you over the course of the last week or so was just the ability to work together to accomplish goals. So one of the things that I wanted to kind of just touch on was, well, this is just where I come from. So my goal was to really help Wheat Ridge to stay connected, to continue to grow, but become resilient and welcoming as it grows. So I've been a resident since 2015. We first started renting here and then purchased a home and we absolutely love it here. So it's, I've just gotten to that portion of my life where I wanted to start to give back and contribute more to my community. So what I do professionally is I'm a national sales director for the parking industry. I work in software, SaaS sales. So I have a lot of experience nationwide, but also working with municipalities, working small businesses, large businesses, startups, all of it. So, and today I'll just kind of go over my experience, priorities, and how I'll work with council and the community to align with the city's values and goals. So just why I want to serve. So strengthening community connection and turning goals into practical results. One of the things that I talked about with Mike when I met with him was seeing the green on 38th. So watching that come to fruition, watching some of the process go through with city council, seeing it be built, and actually seeing some of the people participate in it and get kids get value out of it was a huge thing, as well as other projects throughout. But one of the strengths that I bring too is collaborative efforts. I've worked for several companies over the last couple of years that have gone through acquisitions, mergers and acquisitions. So one of those things that you kind of build with it is resilience and the ability to collaborate with coworkers, leadership, management to reach goals. Because even though you're going through merger and acquisitions, there's still numbers that need to be met and things that need to be delivered for customers. So, and that's really contributed to my relationship building. I work in sales. So one of my main skill sets is to connect with people and to get a better understanding of what their needs are and how to help them, whether it's through mine or connecting them with the right resources to get those needs met. And then the other thing is learning and growing. I'm really ready to learn. I really want to participate and I have people in my circle that will help grow personally, professionally. that will help grow personally, professionally, but also with the community as whole. And the last thing was just being a good example for my kids, but also for the next generation. I've heard a lot of talk today about community and outreach and how to connect with the constituents. So that's something I think that I can actually bring to the table is reaching out to the community, new and innovative ways on how to get community engagement. Some of the relevant experience that I bring through the industry, I have participated in other boards and then a lot of women's group, actually. So I really advocate for equality with women in our industry. I work in a very male-dominated industry. So it's something that I've learned through the years is to develop groups, but also connect with other women and then find our allies within leadership. So through my experience, I've been a part of Chief, which is a national organization for female executives promoting professional and personal growth. I helped found a women's group called Rise within a company that I worked for that is still active today, even though I no longer work with the company. That's won awards within the industry, again, offering organization and professional, personal development opportunities and networking. And then Mobility Pathfinders and Women in Parking are two organizations that I participate in as well. Mobility Pathfinders among the leadership committee, where I help raise funds for the group as a whole and also promote membership. The other skill set that I bring is municipal procurement through my work is I've had to work with cities across the country on a national level, varying city sizes. So I actually get to engage with other city councils, present to them, talk to them about their mobility, transportation and parking infrastructures. So, yeah, one of the companies that I did work for previously was Park Mobile, which is utilized in Golden, RTD and Boulder. It's provided me opportunities to learn firsthand how the different communities and groups' policies work and how things get passed through city council. So it's also helped me, like I said, to connect with other cities. I've made a lot of connections, so I feel like I also have a lot of resources that I can reach out to. Simon, you were very vulnerable in saying you didn't know. I'm not going to know all the answers to the questions, but I know how to get them. And so that's something that I bring is resourcefulness. I know how to get stuff done, you know, whether it's by connecting with people, asking the right questions, finding out. I mean, one of the things I would do is reach out to previous council members and find out what worked and what didn't work, because I don't want to do the same thing that didn't work. So let me try something that might work.
Just about on time.
And the last thing is, I'm a parent. I do have a five-year-old, or nine-year-old and a 13-year-old. So I have kids in the community that are relevant to me. I didn't get to go touch so many priorities, but I just wanted to say that I'm invested emotionally and financially and just all around, because my kids live here, love it here, and I don't see us leaving anytime soon. So with that, I will conclude, and I just want to thank everybody for their time and the opportunity just to be in this presence with the other candidates. So thank you.
We'll go to questions from council. You guys are all new and shy. Counselor Okada.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca, for the presentation. You mentioned in your application smart mobility, given your background as well. Do you have any concrete examples of things that other municipalities do in order to achieve smarter mobility that you think would be appropriate to bring here to Wheat Ridge?
One of the things we talked about when I was meeting with you was I had asked if the, because we have time limits on our streets. So I was like, I wonder if those are actually enforced. It's something that I am a subject matter expert of, is enforcement. So just, and that's something that also helps businesses rotating, just somebody not being able to go out and park in front of the business all day on the on-street. So that's something that, yes, depending on the business size and the revenue that they're taking in, it just depends. But yes, that's one specific thing. I've also been heavily involved with micro-mobility, so I don't know that that's something that Wheat Ridge needs. I know that Denver's been tabling with it, so it's got its pros and cons. But it's definitely something I would have resources available to touch on, to give us more information about.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that council has talked about and worked on for the past year or so is as we think about building new buildings, particularly multifamily buildings, we, the question keeps coming up, or kept coming up, about how many parking spaces are needed these days? And as somebody in the parking industry, just tell us what you think about in terms of when we build a new multifamily housing development and there's, how many parking spaces should be adequate?
I think that really depends on the transportation that we provide, public transportation. So the routes, in fact, I was speaking to, I think it was Mike again, or it might have been Scott, but the ability to get around without having to use a vehicle. But just out of curiosity, how many people in here own a vehicle? How many own two? Sure, it's a vehicle. Do you need a parking space for it? So, but if you were to live in a multi, yeah. So I think that's something I'd take into consideration. I think that there's also a lot of companies out there, consulting companies, that have done a lot of data research on that. So I think it would be creating either a partnership or outsourcing some of that data analytics to find out, how many do we need specifically per unit?
Counselor Martel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca. You talked a bit about, and very passionately about engagement and communication. And the question about communication has come up a bit tonight. What are some ways that you would engage with your district and the community at large to bring that enthusiasm forward out to the community?
Sure. I think probably some of it, similar to Mayor Stites', is attending things. I mean, I think that he's engaged a lot of people to participate and activate just by going to events, going to places and talking to other parents. I'm lucky, I'm a social person, so I don't have a problem kind of starting up conversations with people. And I am a passionate person, so when I get excited about something, it's really easy for me to kind of absorb people into it and get them to participate. So and then social media. I mean, it's one of those things that is utilized, but probably underutilized at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate your time tonight. And our last candidate up tonight, Susan Wood.
I actually was going to stand, but you know what? I don't want to change precedent. This works for me. So, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Stites and city councilors. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be considered for the position of Wheat Ridge City Councilor from District Three. I've lived in Wheat Ridge for the past 32 years. 21 of those have been in District Three. I love our city. I love our quality of life, and I love our people. I've applied for this opportunity because I want to serve the people and the city that I love and I've called home since I moved to Colorado. I have not lived anywhere but Wheat Ridge since I moved to Colorado. A little bit about my work, I know that you probably know a lot of it already, but my work as an urban planner, I've worked in that capacity for almost 30 years at this point. And I've had the opportunity to work for a lot of communities in the Denver metro area, the ones that most come to mind in my first 10 years. I had a career in land use, working for local government, and I included work for Greenwood Village, for Jefferson County and for Douglas County. And for the past 19 years, I've worked for RTD as an environmental and transportation planner. In my current job, I also work with communities that are in the RTD region. And the significance of this is it's given me the experience in local government to see how local government works, to be part of the local government process. And it's given me an understanding of the public sector and really maybe even more importantly, the importance of public service. It's really given me an avenue, planning, my career has given me an avenue to make a difference. And that's what I really want to do. I want to make a difference. You know, what goes on at the state level or at the federal level affects us, and we need to pay attention to that. But it's really here in local government and like in Wheat Ridge, where we have the most direct contact with people and where we have the greatest ability to affect people's lives and the quality of life in our community. And I've also, as a planner, done a lot of service as a volunteer in the American Planning Association, which is the, and this has really gone on for about the past 20 years. And I've worked in various capacities for the American Planning Association, or APA, which is the professional organization for planners. It's a national organization. This has also added to my experience on a variety of issues that we all deal with in local government and that planners deal with as well. But probably more importantly is that service has given me an opportunity to work on committees and task forces and actually at the board level as well and to experience that real, the real importance of teamwork and collaboration, because things don't get done without that, or the right things don't get done, or things that will matter don't get done. And embodied in all of that is the importance of shared values and of respect and of trust. These are essential to me. They're how I operate. They're part of me. Of primary importance to me in the work that I have done as a planner and the work that I would do as a city councilor are the people that council and the city serve. Again, as in my work as a planner, the impact and effect of our actions on people, and I really meet all people, and we're not all exactly the same. We may have the same needs at the heart of things, but we're not all the same. But the impact on all people is the first consideration and the most critical measure of success. Meeting the needs of the people in Wheat Ridge cannot be accomplished without first listening. And I really think that Wheat Ridge has done a remarkable job of that. I have been so impressed with the outreach efforts of the city and of the city staff. And it's such a great, it's just an essential first step to beginning any process or getting input and knowing where the city needs to go. I love the questions that you guys have posed tonight about communication, because I sat back there and I thought to myself, how would I answer that? And I might have an idea or two, but for the most part, I think, again, Wheat Ridge and the city staff has done, and the city council has done a remarkable job. Again, just getting down to the people of Wheat Ridge, there are those who have been here many years. There have been those who've been here a short time. There are those who will move here tomorrow or next year or the year after that. But all of these people are very important and they deserve our best. I'm proud of Wheat Ridge. I'm proud to be a member of the Wheat Ridge community. I've seen positive changes in the years that I have lived here. We've gone from a nice place, a nice place to live, to a dynamic place to live. And I believe this is because of the leadership. I believe it's because of our excellent staff here in Wheat Ridge. And I believe it's because of those outreach efforts and the availability that both the city staff and the elected officials make of themselves to the members of the community.
About on time.
About time. About time. All right. So I will wrap up with saying I've enjoyed serving in different capacities for the city, but what I really want to say is this is my heart. Service is at my heart. There's no greater gift than to be able to work in a position that fills your soul. Thank you for the opportunity to be considered for the position. Thank you for all of your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Oma.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Susan. How would you handle a controversial development that is supported by the majority of council members, but the neighbors surrounding the development are opposed to it?
Well, that goes to communication for sure. And it also goes to integrity, honesty and building trust. But I think, first of all, you have to get them to meet with you and you have to hear from them and really get an understanding of what their perspective is. I mean, that serves a couple of good reasons. For one, you gain an understanding and you understand what it is that you might be able to do to address some of those concerns that they have. That's first and foremost. Plus, it just establishes that first level of trust that you want to hear from them. I know that there are unfortunately oftentimes when we can't meet everyone's needs or meet their exact desires. But again, by understanding what it is that's a problem, we can maybe do something that helps. And beyond that, though, I think providing that, providing information on why it's important to go forward with the development, what the purpose of it is, how it will serve the city, how it can serve all in the city as well as them, and some things be adjusted in order to not impact them to a greater degree, that you, that honesty is all about building trust. It may not be exactly what someone wants to hear, but they'll know that you're a straight shooter at the end of the day.
Counselor Holte.
Thank you, Susan, for putting your name in for this, and also thank you for your service on Planning Commission. So you, you know, in your application and in your comments tonight, you've mentioned how long you've been a resident of Wheat Ridge. And I know we've shared in previous conversations that your husband actually lived in the house across the street from where I lived. But, so this is kind of a two-part question, but they're related. So in the time that you've lived here, what is something that's come to fruition that you, you know, if someone had told you before it happened that it was going to happen, you would have been surprised? Like, there's things, you know, over the course of living here that are hard work and big projects. So like, what's an example of something that's come to fruition while you've lived here that you've like really appreciated what's gone into that? And what's maybe something where we are now looking ahead that you'd like to see come to fruition?
Well, you know, the first thing that comes to mind, and I'm sure there are many things, but the first thing that comes to mind is the Wheat Ridge Rec Center. You know, like I said at the beginning, when I first started, you know, Wheat Ridge was a, or when I first moved here, Wheat Ridge was a nice place to live. But so many things have happened that make it a dynamic place to live. A lot of it is the people that have come here, but the rec center is a piece of that. I know it's been around for a good while at this point in time, but up until that point, you know, people left the community to go to a gym. And that's where a lot of, a lot of social activity occurs. But this was a very concerted effort by the city. They had to get residents on board with it. I don't know exactly how it was funded and exactly, because that was quite some time ago and before my involvement with the city. But certainly the funding had to be put together to make it happen. But first and foremost, the citizens had to want it, and they did, and it did happen. And it's, I think it's made a huge change. It's like the community gathering place, for sure. It's a great amenity.
And then is there something that you'd like to see happen that is just an idea now, but could come to fruition with that same kind of effort?
What I would really like to see, and I actually think, I think it's beginning. I would like to see the possibilities in our other gathering places, like 38th Avenue, become all it can be. And I think that that is starting to happen. I see businesses there. We've seen businesses come and go. We see businesses now that I feel like are going to stay. And I, maybe not all, but some of them. And it's really becoming a place where people are going to. And the green on 38th being across the street from it has, I think, will really enhance that and make it a further place for people together. I think Gold's Market Place is also, is also one of those areas. To the extent that we can bring more restaurants, entertainment-type venues, retail, small business to the community where people want to be here and it feels vibrant, because it's starting to get there now, and I think the more that we can do to encourage that, the better it will be.
Counselor Larson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And with your background in planning, I'll ask you about noise. We live in a noisy place, and one of the things that my constituents continually tell me is that we have to do something about the noise. I'm not talking about noisy neighbors, but traffic. And are there things we can do to help kind of alleviate some of the complaints that people have about noise?
You know, I hear some of those complaints as well, and I know what you're talking about. It's the background noise.
It's the background noise. It's, it isn't, it isn't the barking dogs necessarily in this case. I think that unfortunately, the first and best place to address that is when development occurs. But we're down the road at this point in time, and now we have traffic that's increasing, and so the noise levels are increasing. You know, we can do noise surveys and get some idea of how big the problem is and maybe target areas for improvement, but too often, how the ways to address noise are not things you want next door to you in your neighborhood, and what I'm talking about are noise walls. Vegetation can help for future development, having greater setbacks. Considering it early on is, like I said, the best. But I think beyond that, we have to determine where the, where are the areas of impact, and then really look at the array of options to address them, ones that are the least objectionable.
Thank you.
Council Okada.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Susan. Your expertise in planning, I would consider very high-level expertise, very developed, very, very rich. The high-level expertise like that, in my experience, can sometimes be a double-edged sword, especially in the context of a citizen legislature where part of our job is to be able to address and understand lay opinions and the distance between those things. As someone who's a deep expert who can't give your full education and experience to every person that has a question, what kind of strategies have you developed over time to be able to talk to people like me who don't have that kind of expertise in planning, but have a very strong opinion that might not follow the expert's opinion?
Well, you know, I'll go back to first listening, because I think that's first and foremost. And I think just understanding that not everybody has the same background. You know, I can't throw out a bunch of acronyms, for instance, and expect somebody to know what those are, and that's not going to get any of, either one of us anywhere, and that's for sure. And I think at the end of the day, it's most important to understand where someone's coming from, and then be able to talk about planning aspects, or planning remedies, or avenues that we could take. But that has to be done absolutely in plain English and with respect, that it's not that -- I don't ever see myself in a position of having, or trying to teach someone what planning is, or the exact details of planning. It's more providing an understanding of things that are out there that can be done, the possibilities, the concepts, and going from there.
Thank you very much.
Any other, Council Quinn?
Not necessarily a question, but a comment. It's been a pleasure serving with you on the Planning Commission. It's been very valuable, and you're a great asset for that. And one more thing, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to thank all the applicants for putting it out there once again. It's great to have these choices.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Wood. We appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
That is the last of our applicants for District 3. The motion and the appointment will be made first thing, I believe, at our meeting next Monday. Do you have?
Yes, we have it scheduled for December 8th. As you know, you can't make a decision as a council body this evening. We are asking you to make the appointment first thing on the agenda, so whoever you appoint can participate in that meeting. But yeah.
Okay. So more to come, and thank you to all you, all the candidates who came and spoke tonight. You all did a wonderful job. We will move on to item number three, which is staff reports.
Just real quickly, it's that time of the year, again, this Saturday is our holiday lighting ceremony at the Green, starts at 3:00 PM. I believe the lightings, the lights come on at 6:15, so hopefully we'll see everybody there. And then also for council members specifically, if you are interested in going to the National League Cities Conference, registration is now open. This is the one in March in DC, so hotels fill up quickly. So if you want, if you're interested, let us know so we can get you registered. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Goff. And we'll go to elected official reports. If you've got one, there you go. Council Holteen.
Thank you. A couple of things. First, I'll say this again next Monday, but I just want to acknowledge the death of my friend and our state senator, Faith Winner, who died in a car crash last Wednesday. Faith was a good friend of mine and did a lot of really important work in our state, and she will be dearly missed. On another note, I want to try and do a better job of just sharing some of the committees and boards and commissions that I get to be a part of. And so our legislative committee met, technically it was a week ago, but we missed Thanksgiving. So we welcomed Council Member Okada joining us, and we are revisiting our legislative agenda, which we're looking forward to bringing to council in January. The legislative session will kick off mid-January, so we're making sure that we've got the input from our community and staff and the committee to bring a well-vetted legislative agenda back to council. And then Sustainable Wheat Ridge met, and they are in the process of picking a couple of priorities for 2026 to really focus on, and they're surveying their own members to really get a better sense of what the expertise and interest areas are of the existing committee members, so that they can really leverage those. And then we were really grateful to have Alex Goldsmith from the Idea Committee come and share a little bit more about what they're doing, and there was a lot of synergy around community engagement and really engaging our community around both hearing from them what's important, but then also letting them know some of the things that the city's up to. So those are a couple of things that have kept me busy the last few weeks. And then this Friday, I have the CML Policy Committee.
Council Martel.
Thank you, Mayor. As Patrick said, this Saturday is the holiday tree lighting, but leading up to that, I'd like to make sure everyone is aware of the Festival of Trees that is happening. It kicked off last Saturday, and we have, I think, 18 trees that were sponsored by local businesses and organizations, and they are being auctioned, and all of the money will go to Foothills Animal Shelter. And there's also a competition where you can vote for your favorite tree. And the sponsor, the business or organization that sponsored the tree that raises the most money and the People's Choice get bragging awards that were made by one of our artists at The Makerspace. And we've got a lot of great sponsors around this event, and we have some great community members who have stepped up to sponsor trees, including some businesses that have been in our community that haven't really been engaged before. So we're super excited to bring some new businesses on board. So I invite everyone to stop by and see the trees and bid on them and bet on them or vote for them. It's at the Center for Music, the Wheat Ridge Center for Music and Arts, over at 38th, just east of Wadsworth. The trees will be on display tonight and every night this week with the big celebration on December 6th. The awards will be announced at the tree lighting right before the tree is lit up, so we hope to see everybody at the Festival of Trees and at the tree lighting. Other than that, I'd like to thank all the candidates or applicants who came in tonight and met with us. As Pat said, we have a really tough decision in front of us, and I'm really grateful for the caliber of people who came out that are making this a tough choice. Thank you.
Any other reports? Council Snow.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to also mention something that we got going on in District 1. Council Martel and I are planning our first District 1 meeting. That will be happening next Wednesday, the 10th. It's also at the Wheat Ridge Center for Music and Arts. This is a time for District 1 folks to come, join us, get to know Council Martel, Council Holteen, you're welcome to come. Anyways, we'd love to have all of you, and really just a time to kind of get to know us, also get to know your neighbors. We are also conducting a food and clothing drive during that time, and we are providing a warm soup meal. So please come and come hungry, because we'll have some good stuff. But really just a time for us to kind of get together, talk to folks, and then we are really excited to kind of launch our plan for '26 and how we're engaging folks in District 1. So that's that. So next Wednesday, 6 to 8 PM, is the time for that. Another, just another thought, too, I also would like to extend a sincere thanks to everyone who stepped up to go through the process to apply for this position, and it seemed like a really quick timeline to really prepare for that. So kudos to everyone for really stepping up and digging in. It is going to be a hard decision, so thank you.
Thank you. Council Larson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will repeat that the big event is this Saturday at 3:00 at the Green on 38th. But looking back over the Thanksgiving holiday, I attended the 32nd Thanksgiving feast at my in-laws in Chicago. And the trip back tested all of the cold-weather, icy driving skills that I learned as a young man, because getting out of Illinois was a challenge. We counted 26 cars that slid off the road, 15 trucks that had slid off the road, and somehow we managed to slide through. Made it to St. Louis and then made the drive back. But it was another Thanksgiving to remember, and hopefully every, everyone else was able to enjoy yours and theirs, and we look forward to the upcoming holiday season.
Any other reports tonight?
All right. I just have a couple. I was invited by a few of the members of the Active Adult Center, my wife Sarah and I, to do Thanksgiving dinner with them. I believe it was two Fridays ago now. The Active Adult Center is fantastic. It's not somewhere I've spent a whole lot of time, as not quite making it the age requirement there yet. But fantastic food by Food for Thought Catering. They had the string quartet from, actually, the Denver Center for Performing Arts, or the, sorry, the Denver Symphony was amazing, and the people were just absolutely phenomenal, getting to meet a lot of different people and see a lot of people that we do know there. I also participated in the Turkey Trot down at Anderson Park, or no, I'm sorry, not Anderson Park, at Prospect Park last Saturday. Personal Chief Marshal, it's had a, I don't know, a team of almost 30, I think, running in that, and had a lot of fun. It was great to support some local businesses and all that, I believe, some charity as well. We do have a ribbon cutting tomorrow for PNC Bank at, that's Kipling and 38th Avenue at 1045, and then we have a ribbon cutting for Panorama Park, the new basketball and tennis courts, tomorrow at 4:00, so everybody's invited to that as well. Just a reminder, councilors and potential councilors, next Monday after the meeting, we are doing our group photo, so it's a meeting, you should wear your best anyway, but make sure you're ready to go and you look nice for that, and it'll be right after the meeting. We will be appointing our new District 3 City Councilor next Monday at our regular scheduled meeting, 6:30 on the 8th. So with no other business, we will adjourn. Have a great week, drive safely.